One that says there ballot number one. If you would all please indicate your choice, vote for one and then sign your ballot and pass it to the left and the city clerk would read the results.
I'm sorry, I don't have ballots.
There is, there should be on the place in the material there.
It's behind there.
It's under, it was under some other materials.
Yeah.
Which made it.
Okay.
There it is. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we start voting, I just want to thank each and every applicant. We are very fortunate to have such compassionate, caring people that care about not only the city of Topeka but their district. Voting is always very difficult when we have to do it, but I just want to say thank you because each one of you showed something different to us, I believe. I'm just speaking for myself, but, and I thought it was very touching that you could see and feel the compassion that you all share. So, good luck to all of you and I hope that you will continue to make not only District Four but the city of Topeka a better place that we call home. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very well spoken, thank you. Yes, proceed.
We have one for Anthony Emerson. One for Les Parrish. One for Les Parrish. Two for Les Parrish, one for Anthony Emerson. Two for Anthony Emerson. Three for Anthony Emerson. Three for Les Parrish. Less Parrish, three. Christina Fisher. Anthony Emerson. Anthony Emerson, one. Less Parrish.
That's mine.
Less Parrish. Less Parrish. Anthony Emerson. Anthony Emerson. Less Parrish. Christina Fisher. Anthony Emerson. Less Parrish. So, four and four. We have four for Anthony Emerson and four for Les Parrish and one for Christina Fisher.
All right, and as we know, it requires five votes to have an election, to elect a candidate, so you have before you ballot number two. I would suggest that we proceed with ballot number two.
Less Parrish. Anthony Emerson. Less Parrish. Anthony Emerson. Anthony Emerson. Anthony Emerson. Less Parrish. Anthony Emerson. We have six Anthony Emerson, three Less Parrish.
Then that means that Anthony. Congratulations, congratulations, Mr. Emerson. We will have the, the next item is for the judge to come forward, which will be right here where we did the, no, where we had the proclamation. You know where your TV remote is too?
I do solemnly swear.
But I support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the state of Kansas.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the city council member.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the city council member.
For District Number Four of the city of Topeka, Kansas. For District Number Four of the city of Topeka, Kansas. So long we go.
Okay, you may come around or come over.
Or jump over.
Jump over the.
That would be a good start.
Yeah, jump over the.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, I should have done that from in there.
No, no, you're fine.
Thank you.
Will you jump?
We'll bring, we'll bring. Thank you, sir.
These are the, they're both.
Yeah.
Yes, I have them. You ready?
We'll proceed then with the next item on the agenda, which is item five C, election.
Election of one city council voting representative to serve a one-year term on the Joint Economic Development Organization Board.
Okay, council members, as you know, there is a vacancy there and actually if you look at the ballot in front of you, it has the three, the, there are four voting members of the governing body on the JDO Board, the mayor, the deputy mayor, and Jeffrey Cohen. Then we have to elect a fourth person to be a voting member. And of interest, by the way, Councilman Harmon had to leave for, again, for the business that he's involved in right now and will not be here the rest of the meeting. Are there, I know some of you have served as JDO voting members. With those who have, raise their hands so we know, you know, okay, councilwoman. All right, so that, if that's any benefit, that, not that they can't, anyone can serve again, but then of course Councilman Cohen and deputy mayor would not be serving. So at this point, we will take nominations to have as the voting member on JDO and you can self-nominate or you can nominate another person. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to nominate Sandra Clear.
Okay, Sandra Clear has been nominated. Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would nominate Councilwoman Emerson.
Councilwoman Emerson has been nominated. Councilwoman Delisva.
I would like to nominate Councilwoman Hiller.
Okay, Councilwoman Hiller's been nominated. Any other nominations? Are there further nominations? Are there further nominations? We declare that nominations are over. You have in front of you and we will look for here. We'll look for ballots. There it is. Okay, we have a ballot there and it says ballot number one, JDO Board members, please vote for one of Congress, Councilwoman Hiller, Councilwoman Clear, or Councilman Emerson.
How many votes?
One.
No, how many votes? Very, how many votes do they?
Oh, how many votes? It's a minimum of five, whoever gets the highest number of votes, but it has to be at least five votes.
All right. Another question, go ahead.
Well, if there are council members that want to run that haven't served before, I'm willing to, well, I'm short on committees and so the deputy mayor had encouraged, had said maybe I could do that, so I'm willing to, but I'm also willing to pass.
All right, I guess take the consideration they're voting. All right, if you have voted and pass your ballot to the left. One, one more.
Clear. Clear. Emerson. Councilmember Clear received five votes, Emerson received three, and Hiller received one.
Having received five, Councilwoman Clear is elected as a voting member of JDO. Thank you. Thank you for serving. Proceed to item, excuse me, item D, an election.
D is election of city council representative to the Metropolitan Topeka Planning Organization Policy Board.
All right, and you are familiar, this is the, it's actually a two-year term. We have two members elected from the council. Current serving is Brendan Jensen, and then we have the vacancy and then a third person, third council member is appointed by the mayor, and that is Jeffrey Cohen. So we will elect someone to serve out the remainder of this term, which would be approximately one more year. So nominations are now open for that position. Council, Deputy Mayor Delisva.
Thank you, Mayor Wilk, and I would like to nominate Councilwoman Hiller.
Councilwoman Hiller's been nominated.
Second.
No seconds are required, but you could certainly make them. You could certainly make them. Feel free to.
I'm not trying to confuse the guy.
All right. Are there other nominations? Are there other nominations? Are there nominations? Seeing none, or declare nominations closed, please mark your ballot and pass them to the left.
Hiller. 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 And Hiller.
This is fans.
Hiller received nine votes.
Having received nine votes.
Actually, uncharacteristically, love transportation planning, so.
You are, you are elected as our, as our, yes, as our voting member of the Metropolitan Topeka Planning Organization. Now we turn to other action items. We go to item E.
E is setting a public hearing date of June 7, 2016, for consideration of imposing special assessments for Lawrence Bay Villas subdivision, Lawrence Bay Estates, and Kanza Education Park.
Council, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ask Mr. Kaufman to provide a brief overview of this item, explaining what it's doing, and answer any questions.
Excuse me, before you, city, Assistant City Clerk, do you have an extra copy of the agenda?
I have it now.
We just found, oh, thank you, we just located it, thank you, we have it. All right, please proceed.
Mayor and members of the council, so tonight, we're here to request that you set a public hearing for special assessments for Lawrence Bay, Lawrence Bay Estates, some other entities or subdivisions out there, including projects for Kanza Education, Science Park. So I'm going to give you a brief overview, and we came to you last year and talked to you about special assessments. So, special assessments are a tool that's utilized throughout the state of Kansas. It's been allowed in state law since 1957. So typically what occurs, the city bonds for some type of asset that's going to go into a certain area that's defined and drawn on a map, and within that, those assets typically are going to be your streets, your maybe water lines and sewer-type districts. So this is a tool that's been utilized all across the state. Once a project is, a petition is submitted, and then that petition is approved by the council with a project that goes along for that, once the project is finally complete and we receive all the costs, then those, the bonds are sold, and then those bonds are then paid back by special assessments that are levied on the tax bill of all the units within the boundaries of that benefit district. This is something that encouraged development and highly utilized across the state of Kansas. So last year, we brought to you the attention of Lawrence Bay, and we also talked about the various things, the various projects that were going on, and last year, there were three projects that were levied, the water, the street, and the small pond. So this year, we're coming back to talk about the big pond that not only impacts, if you see this map here, the 178 units in Lawrence Bay Estates, the big pond is spread to a larger area, and that large area is defined in this map here. So it's also, the, the units that are assigned in this area vary by your proximity to the pond. So if you can see the, the larger pond up in that area, which is, I think, also referred to as Blue Hare and Park, the pink shaded lots receive four units. So each unit is basically worth $119 that you're going to be assessed on an annual basis. So these, if you receive four units, you're going to be assessed up to 100, $400. If the, the light brown unit, units or parcels up there are going to receive three units, the purple shaded receive two units, and then the green receive one unit. So as you go further away from the pond, the less units you receive is how that original petition was set up. There are 806 units total that are going to be spread across about 374 different parcels in this area. Might pause there for any questions.
Are there questions on this particular one with Lawrence Bay? Councilman Cohen.
We talked last week about, you know, considering, have you thought about relaying out the property lines so that there's more property line space? That didn't go anywhere?
You.
I know it's that nightmare scenario thing, but I was just wondering where we, where we ended with that.
Actually, this is a different, a different issue than, than that particular one. This has, this goes back to the pond issue. Okay. As opposed to other things that we might have to do with Lawrence Bay.
Later.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilman Cohen, yes, there is an ongoing conversation pertaining to the overall Lawrence Bay special assessment situation and some various strategies. Yes, there's work that's being done on that. It will come back to this body for further discussion.
Okay, good. That's all I had.
Okay, other, other questions on this? Okay, seeing none, proceed.
So then I also mentioned three other projects that were also submitted as a petition, and these were approved in January 22, 2013, and this is for the Kanza Education and Science Park, which is about 150 acres located on Sixth Street. This was purchased by USD 2501 back in 2009, and at that time, they requested, I think, improvements to that area for streets, water, and sewer. So there are three different projects associated with this. The map shown right now is the benefit district for the street projects. So that street project has 106 different parcels included, so per year, each parcel would receive approximately $4,800 in special assessments levied on to the tax rolls for the streets, for the water improvement district. You can see the map up there in blue, which is different, a little bit different from the street improvement district. There are 97 different units within the water district. The per unit per year would be about $592 for the, for those assessments, and these, all these assessments would be spread over 10 years, whereas the Lawrence Bay would be spread over a 20-year period.
Would you just want to explain where we are in the process? I think that, because why is this, why is this coming to us now?
Okay.
And what, what we're doing.
Okay, so generally, the, a special assessment process, at some point in time, the city would receive a petition, and then that petition would go to the governing body, and then that petition would say, we have a benefit area that is shown up on this map, and we want to do certain improvements in that area. So for this district here, they want to do sewer line improvements for that area. So that was approved by the governing body back in 2013. Once that's approved, then staff have all the authority to go out, seek bids for those projects, receive bids, and carry forth a construction project. Once every, everything is final and all the final costs are included and received by the city, then we bring that back to the governing body. At that point, you would set a public hearing, and then after certain, so many days, you can hold the public hearing, and then after you hold a public hearing, at that time, you would consider an assessment ordinance, and then that assessment ordinance is what would be approved to put that, those assessments onto the tax rolls.
So that's where we are right now.
Yeah, that's where we are, setting the public hearing, and then that would set the public hearing for June 7.
Okay, the improvements have been made, now we're ready to assess the assessments, is what we're doing.
That is correct.
We're, we're taking that step.
That is correct.
Okay, any questions? So tonight is, is setting it, yes, Councilman Emerson.
Yes, thank you. Is the total project budget now, or the total dollar spent now finalized?
So the, the total construction costs of the project are finalized. Once you set a, a public hearing and then approve an assessment ordinance, then that opens a 30-day pay-in window, and during that 30-day pay-in window, then somebody from the public or, and anybody who owns a parcel can come in and they can pay a, basically a partial or the full amount down, so that there's no assessments on that property moving forward into the future. And then after that, we price it, and then we get it to the bond, to a bond sale. And so after the bond sale is really when we have all the final costs, because we know what the interest is going to be charged over the next 10 to 20 years, and then we put that on the tax rolls.
Okay, and, and I may have a conflict, I am the contractor actually, who's doing the sewer and water here, so I don't know what to do, I guess.
We would.
This is just setting the public hearing, it's appropriate.
Okay, okay.
You can, I'll just set the hearing.
I've got to get that bill into annual.
Okay, all right. Yes, City Manager.
Also on that, Mr. Mayor, the, the water and sewer assessments were set last year. The only one setting tonight is for the big pond, so that.
For the Lawrence Bay, it's just the one, it's just that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I meant the Kanza, the Kanza projects.
Okay.
For the one that, my company was on.
Okay. Let's see, you had something earlier, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that we clarify, the first thing we need to do is set the public hearing, and that's, that's what we're doing tonight, is to vote to set the public hearing for June the 7th, right? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilwoman Clear.
I hate to ask this, but I want to understand, can you go back to the very beginning, I mean, just in two sentences or something? 501 wanted to make changes, and so they brought a petition, and then it was approved.
That is, Councilmember Clear, that is correct.
Okay. So anybody can do that?
Councilmember Clear, yes, that's correct. Any, anybody can petition the city for a benefit district.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Schwartz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Brandon, the hearing is going to be on a Tuesday night, which we will be having a council meeting. Um. Where's that, do we, have we set where the hearing is going to be?
Councilmember Schwartz, the public hearing is always held within the.
Oh, it's here, okay. Thank you, I'm gone.
That's good, that was a good, get them all, get all the questions. Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. And I apologize if I'm repeating Councilman Cohen's question, but I, I'm confused. The handouts that we have just talk about Lawrence Bay Estates, yet we're setting a hearing that includes Lawrence Bay Villas as well as Lawrence Bay Estates?
That is correct. Councilmember Hillary, that is correct. So let me walk back to the map.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
We can draw a line and divide them up on this map?
I don't have that, Councilmember Hillary, I don't have that tonight, but I can get you a map that kind of shows the various. If you look at Lawrence Bay Estates, which I think we've talked about before, it's kind of in the middle here, and it's the 178 lots right here in the middle. The development to the south is, I believe, Lawrence Bay Estates, Estates 2, which would be the Doltmeyer Development. The developments to the north, there's various ones involved, there's Lawrence Bay Villas and a couple others that I can't remember off the top of my head. But we can work to get a map that shows the different subdivisions included in this area. But this, this map up here represents all of the different parcels that are impacted within that area by the big pond assessments.
So are there a total of 178 on this map or more than 178?
Councilmember Hillary, there are more than. So there's a total of 806 units that are going to be assessed. And those units impact about 374 different parcels. And the units vary by the proximity to the pond.
That's what I thought, thank you. So we just highlighted Lawrence Bay Estates on this handout, not because they're the only place that'll be assessed, just showing something special for them.
And Councilmember Hillary, I think we highlighted it because last year, we talked about it with the streets and the water and the, and the little pond being assessed out there. So just wanted you to be aware that this is kind of a continuation that we said we were going to come back this year to talk about the big pond and that it not only impacts that Lawrence Bay Estates, but it also impacts surrounding subdivisions in that area.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think on the document description, it does list all three.
I thought so.
On this, so it's just, which we would be, really be going by. All right, we do, are there other questions for Mr. Kaufman? Councilwoman Ortiz moves to approve, setting the public hearing. Deputy Mayor Deleese La seconds, any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the public hearing is set. We proceed to item 5F as a resolution.
F is a resolution introduced by City Manager Jim Colson relating to a special permit for cutback parking at 1195 Southwest Buchanan Street pursuant to Topeka Municipal Code 1250 050.
And before we proceeding, Boy Scouts, thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate your joining us. Mr. City Manager on, we're back to F.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask Jason Peak, Public Works Director, to come forward. We talked about this item in, as a discussion item last week as a specific project pertaining to the cutback parking. Mr. Peak can provide an overview of last week's item and then also answer any questions.
Okay, Mr. Peak.
Sure, what we have before you is a resolution, a request to approve insulation of cutback parking on Southwest 12th Street. This parking is being requested as part, by the Housing and Credit Counseling, Inc. As part of the ordinance process, we're required to review that request and then bring a recommendation forth to council. We've brought a recommendation for approval and therefore would request approval of the resolution.
Are there questions on the resolution? Seeing none, Councilman Jensen?
Move to approve.
He moves to approve and Council, Deputy Mayor Deleese La seconds, any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
Hillary, you are a, what's that? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, okay, we have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the resolution is approved. Item G, ordinance.
G is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson amending City of Topeka Code Sections 1250 050 and 1250 060 and specifically repealing said original section as well as repealing Section 1250 070, all concerning cutback parking.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is related to the cutback parking action that was just taken, but more addresses the approval process for this. Mr. Peak had provided an overview to this body last week. He is available to provide a brief overview, answer any questions. We are seeking approval of this change.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Peak. Again, we discussed this last week. Are there questions? Any background additional information that we need? Deputy Mayor Hillary?
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Hillary?
We'll answer the one.
We revert back.
I had some questions after last week because I have run into some situations regarding building permits for driveway cuts that did not get through all the traps that they should have. I think staff has resolved that, but they, there are issues of not just the kinds of rules that are in this ordinance, but also overlays of historic preservation or neighborhood plans, or now we have in, in Westboro our first CID. And so wanting to make sure that, that those plans would be checked. So I did talk to Mr. Peak and I think I've got it right, that this would be the engineering side. Would you, but, but anybody who wants to do something like this would have to get a permit, correct?
That is correct.
So could you just reassure me and then the body, what kinds of oversight besides what's here, any application for cutback would go through?
Sure, so an applicant making this request, you know, typically would start within Development Services. They would alert engineering that we have a request for cutback parking within the right-of-way. Engineering then would need to receive that request. We would need to coordinate the review with other departments, basically to issue an approval of that request. So, you know, that's been our current practice with the ordinance is to coordinate that review so that we make sure that we don't miss anything that may be from another department function.
And if I could follow up, just one question to clarify, who would do the checking with those other departments or other overlays?
So, you know, what we're asking for within this is, is the ordinance is the city engineer or their designee. And it's, as I discussed with you in the phone call, you know, my expectation for that city engineer is, I mean, they have the professional wherewithal to know that this is a, an encroachment within the right-of-way, so it's not just an engineering function that we need to look at, that it does relate to what we do from public safety and planning. So they would ensure that, that review is coordinated.
Thank you. I was a little bit nervous about making sure, having, you know, the city council person's the one who gets called when it doesn't go well. And I've been through those. So I got, having been supportive, because I've had some folks that needed cut-ins that had some barriers that, that got worked through, so I was supportive last week and then I got worried about it, missing signals. I'm at this point nervous still, but satisfied that the procedures will take care of it and I can't support it.
Okay, are there other questions or comments? Seeing none, Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. Move to approve.
Moves to approve. Councilwoman Claire seconds, discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have eight yes, Councilmember Cohen voting no.
Eight having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. Go to item H, ordinance on expenditures.
H is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of April 2nd, 2016 through April 29, 2016, and enumerating said expenditures therein.
Mr. City Manager?
I'm going to have Mr. Gerber.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Approval would authorize expenditures in the amount of $16,418,858.77. Seeking approval.
Deputy Mayor Deleese La? Councilwoman Schwartz seconds, any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. Go to item I, resolution on budget priorities.
I has a resolution introduced by Deputy Mayor Michelle Deleese La regarding the 2017 City of Topeka budget priorities.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Wolgass. We just want to elaborate just a little bit as a body. We had a few weeks of working with the public and with the council members to establish some priorities. Last week, we went ahead and we gave a detailed outline of those priorities to the city council to evaluate. The comments were that some of the council members were given consideration. If you look at the new document, we have the items prioritized based on how the community decided that they wanted to see those priorities happen. However, before we go any further, one of the processes that we did, I, I gave a preview last week, was that we went out into the public and we asked people what they knew about the City of Topeka. And we knew that considering that tonight was going to be a very long night, we wanted to make everybody smile and get excited about the budget. So before we go any further with the discussion, we would like to show you a video that the Communications Department did out on the road, asking people what they knew about the city's budget.
Okay, so, we're out here talking about the city budget. Do you know what a budget is?
No.
How much money do you think the City of Topeka has to pay for stuff like the zoo and the fire department?
I don't know.
You don't know? Take a wild guess. What's the biggest number you can think of?
10.
10? 1,180!
Twenty bazillion dollars.
I'd say probably top out around 400K.
2,000, 270 million.
What?
Get the hell out of here.
Oh, wow.
Should it be that high for a city with only 65, 85,000 people in it?
The city has 128,000.
Really? I don't know [BLEEP] about.
Could you name three sources of revenue for the City of Topeka?
Yes, property tax, yes.
Neighborhoods have special taxes like Sherwood.
Sure they get revenue from tickets and things like that, you know?
Isn't there some kind of bed tax?
Yes.
Sales tax?
Yes, sir.
And?
And revenue sharing from estate.
What kind of stuff does the city pay for? Just name three things the city pays for.
Education? No. Our police force, right?
Maintenance of streets.
Yes.
Parks?
Nope.
Oh, that's county now.
Yes, sir.
So no recreational at all? What about the zoo?
The zoo.
They pay for city council.
They do.
Any guesses on how many employees the City of Topeka has?
Like, a lot!
5,000.
15,000?
Uh, 10,000 or not?
Very close, 1,176.5.
1.5, if you want to have a half person.
We have a part-time person.
Oh, okay. All right.
And she's all for.
Huge thanks to Ally Van Dyke and to everybody that helped cut this video. We're going to be sharing this video on Twitter and on the city's Facebook, and I encourage everybody to share that as well. So what we have heard from discussing the priorities with the, the body, with people in the public, is that the top priorities are investing in infrastructure, continuing a commitment to developing neighborhoods, a commitment to public safety, selective strategic investments towards quality of life, improving fiscal sustainability, and improving performance and cost effectiveness. One of the things that you will notice in the ordinance is that it's expanded upon. As we've been working on this, Councilwoman Hillary made a great point with regards that there's years that the council has said that they don't want as much detail, but we had heard this year specifically that they wanted to have a little bit more detail with regards to how those dollars were being expended in those priorities. And furthermore, one of the things that we find very exciting is that this year, as we go through the budget process, we have talked about having a sheet that would include these line items and the costs on the side so that the constituents can see how those monies are going to be invested to make that happen. So that being said, the purpose of tonight's meeting is for us to adopt these priorities. At this point in time, I will pause to see if there's any questions.
Any questions you have? This point, would you, okay.
I, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, I so appreciate the work on this. I did say last time that in the years leading up to like last year, people were interested in the shorter version. My concern about doing, passing tonight, a more detailed version, would be, we haven't talked about some of those specifics. And I, I was nervous about an assumption that we, that we included everything, for one thing, but also that an assumption might be made that if we included certain categories by name here, that it was in effect an endorsement that we wanted to spend at least as much money or more money on that item as we had in the past. So, and that seemed premature to me with some of the specifics that were here. So maybe I could ask whether your interpretation would be that if we approved this as it's worded today, that we would be making a commitment to maintain or increase dollars for each of those items?
Councilwoman Hillary, thank you so much for your question. I don't think that this is specifically an indication that we are increasing funding on any of these areas. If you take a look at the items that are listed here, these are items that have been already brought to the council in various presentations as areas that we are focusing on, that have already been budgeted for and that we've discussed as priorities. So stating that these are the items that we're going to work on are just a small snapshot of things that would be included within the areas that our community stated that they were interested in seeing improvement in.
Thank you.
And I think, don't the priorities help to define the budget, the directions we want to go? And the budgeting process, we go through a lot of different processes of determining, you know, looking what's available. So I, I would agree that this is a, it's more of a direction, it's a plan, but no, there's no commitment at this point. We're establishing just some priorities. Go ahead.
I appreciate that. And I can defer, I've got one comment further. And if we were going to go ahead with the detail, I've got heartburn on one particular item, and that would be the fourth bullet in number two, continuing commitment to developing neighborhoods. And, and the reason overall is that one of our biggest challenges, and we have invested money as well as process and programming time, is substandard housing and code compliance. And the language that is itemized here talks about our demolition program and our special structures unit and vacant properties, which were kind of popular. And hopefully though, to me, we were investing extra only for a very short term because code compliance has been neglected for a while. But I personally would prefer to see it read, continue focus on identifying, categorizing, and addressing substandard and vacant properties and affordable housing solutions through code compliance, comma, our special structures unit, and partnerships with agencies and community members. I think that balances a little better what we're about in that dimension. So I'll throw that out for reaction and conversation. I could make that as a specific amendment if need. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Claire?
I understand when you say continue, continue to, that means we were doing it. But what about on number five where it says build a comprehensive plan? Does that mean we don't have one and now we are going to build one? And the establish and maintain, does that mean we are going to have to establish one and then integrate performance management? So those three that don't say continue, does that mean it's something new?
Mayor Wolgass may address the question.
Sure, yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor Wolgass. Thank you for your question, Councilwoman Claire. I would dare to say that we have had a plan to address the fleet issue. For several years, we have been working with the police department, with fire departments, and, and all across our, our, our assets. our, our assets, so that we could have a plan, so that we could do that. I think that this was just a matter of the places that this, these items were sent, where we, when we were in the process of developing this list, these items were sent out to the different departments that worked on all of this. So there may be a slight difference in verbiage, but it does not imply by any mean that there has been no work on these areas. There has been work on these areas. We have been talking about these issues for a while. I think that the spirit of these bullets was to continue that work and to continue looking at strategic ways that we could work with our fleet, so that we don't have the deferred maintenance issues that we've had in the past. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I suggest that we have a motion to place this on the table, and then we can proceed. Councilman Jensen?
So moved.
And Deputy Mayor seconds. So we have placed before us the resolution on the, of the city budget priorities. Do you, Councilwoman Hiller?
If I could propose an amendment, it would be as stated before, but I'll run it through again. I do not have it written for you. It's penciled here, I can give it to you. It would be in number two, continuing a commitment to developing neighborhoods, bullet number four, which is line, well, I don't have the updated one. What line would it be? Line twenty-six. Continue focus on identifying, categorizing, and addressing, insert, substandard and vacant properties, and affordable housing solutions through, insert, code compliance, comma, our special structures unit, demolition budget, and partnerships with agencies and community members.
Yes. Okay, you move.
That's the motion.
You moved to amend in that process. Councilwoman...
I will second that motion.
Deputy Mayor seconds. Is there discussion on the amendment? We have someone that has signed to speak on this, and I think it'd be fine to do that at this point before we start, start voting even on this. Joseph Ledbetter, if you'd like to address the group.
Thank you, governing body. As I was looking at this afternoon, I said, I'm going to speak to this, because what concerned me was I didn't see enough focus on code enforcement. And so, these, these amended, these amended changes do that. I was going to simply suggest that you do a separate bullet under four and say commit to resolve code issues and code enforcement issues. Whether you use that or not, code enforcement is, is a serious problem in the NIAs, especially high crest. But it's in other parts of the city. It's not just Highland Crest or High Crest. So, I, I would ask you to, to focus your budget priorities on, on really fixing those issues. And I know they're not going to happen overnight. No, nothing that has been neglected for a long time is going to happen overnight, but you, you get on top of a mountain, one foot in front of the other. I mean, that's how you do it. And you have to start really a determination, and it really starts with the manager and administration, but also the council setting that direction. And a number of you have NIAs in your areas, and you know the problems with landlords, you know the problems with other issues in those areas that are holding those areas of the city back. I also would say that, as I see things, and this is just simply I process information when I become aware of the problem, I think you'd have a lot less vacant properties and a lot less demolitions if the code enforcement was intervening a lot earlier in the process and identify, and I'm not critiquing anybody here. I'm simply just pointing out some of what I've viewed and seen as it addresses this resolution. But identifying the people that are not fixing their houses up, and I mean repeatedly, and at some point, the neighborhoods are tired of the treadmill. They expect results, they expect change, and that's what they want. And so, I'm not going to belabor that, I've said enough on it. I, under item four, you know, I'm sorry, but I, I know a lot of people that are not excited about a riverfront. Now downtown is different, and, and I mean, I've come along on that, I like what's going on. I'm especially intrigued by the private investment, which we did not have before, which was one of the reasons that there was criticism, because we didn't see things take off with the private sector. The city cannot do everything. But now that has been engaged. But I, I'm going to just question, riverfront, what is that? Is that forty million dollars? Is that, I mean, just what is that? I, I don't think we've had a really good public discussion on that, as to how, if anything, we want to fund concerning a riverfront. I think we've had certain groups push it and certain committees push it. But I also noticed in, in looking at some of those reports and some of those audiences, that it was just certain people that were invited, and it was not the public at large being asked, do you really want to fund this? And at what amount? Is it forty million? Is it thirty million? Is it a dam? What is it? What is riverfront? And so I, I don't think that's well-defined, so I just have to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Completes the public discussion on the issue. We have before us an amendment to the budget priorities. And the clerk, could you read those, read that amendment again? So...
On line twenty-six, it starts at the fourth bullet point of priority item number two, continuing a commitment to developing neighborhoods. It's read as follows. Continue focus on, excuse me, identifying, categorizing, and addressing, inserting substandard and vacant properties and affordable housing solutions through, inserting code compliance, comma, our special structures unit, demolition budget, and partnerships with agencies and community members.
Okay, that is the, that is the amendment. Is there any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have eight yes and councilmember Cohen voting no.
Eight having voted yes, the amendment is approved. So it would be appropriate to have a, a motion then to approve the budget priorities as amended. Deputy Mayor?
Who would make that motion, Mayor Wolgast?
So moves, and Councilman Jensen seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the budget priorities resolution is approved. Okay, that completes the action items for this evening. We proceed then with the announcements. There is no preliminary agenda, since there is not a council meeting for the next two weeks. So we'll go to the city manager for your announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This week, excuse me, in addition to being National Public Works Week and Sheltered Living Month, is also Emergency Medical Services Week. And in celebration, I'm wearing my Maltese cross cufflinks. But Fire Department responds, seventy-three-plus percent of our calls are medical-related in the city. This year alone, the Fire Department's responded to more than five thousand emergency medical calls. They do a great job. They work in partnership with AMR. We just want to recognize them for the outstanding work that those agencies do in conjunction with each other, saving lives here in the, in the community. Also, by way of announcement, tomorrow, from four thirty to six PM at the American Legion, will be the California Street Project Meeting, and they will be specifically talking about the street and waterline projects between twenty-ninth and thirty-seventh. Today was kind of a fun day. As part of the Public Works Week, they had the rolling truck tour. And so, Public Works Utilities was out. They visited three elementary schools, took ten big trucks, and gave the kids an opportunity to interact with some pretty big vehicles. They're a lot of fun. The last thing I want to know is, you notice there's a red nose here, and this, May twenty-sixth, next Thursday, yeah, you got your nose. Next week, next Thursday is Red Nose Day, and the concept is help children have fun. The, this is a charity that is, it's a, actually an international thing that came over the United States, and the idea is to raise funds that can be made available to support children in need, specifically poverty and in need children. So, I, my goal is at the end of this meeting, that we all put our noses on, and we get here, and we get a picture taken, and we sort of celebrate it for fun. So if you're, if you're game, so, all right. So that concludes my...
Okay. Deputy Mayor De La Isla, your announcements.
I will leave it on when I start. I will take it off because I don't want to sound nasally in the process. Red nose to support children, absolutely. That being said, I wanted to just make a few remarks of appreciation to the outstanding community that we serve. It was wonderful to see six individuals step up to the plate and express an interest in serving their community. This job is not an easy job. We are here, late nights on Tuesdays, we are on the phone, twenty-four seven when our constituents need us. We are there to tackle the tough questions. We are there to celebrate and cry when bad things happen in our city, and we keep on coming back every single day. And to know that we had such a variety of individuals, we had so much diversity. I was so proud of seeing everybody that was here. Seeing Zach, just so young and so vibrant, wanting to step up, seeing the gentleman that had, you know, lived in his district for his whole life and, you know, wanted to be here and serve. The lady that we had that was a part of the HRC, who was already serving the community, stepped up to the plate as well. We had a mom that was about to have a baby and still was willing to go ahead and say, yes, I love my district, I love my city, I want to do this. We had so many great people step up, and, and I just want to say thank you to District Four, for the outstanding citizens that we had over there, and, and for the people that stood up and wanted to do a job. So in that same vein, I would like to welcome our new council member. You have a great team. We look forward to working with you. We look forward to serving with you. Very moving remarks with regards to leadership and service, and I look forward to seeing those pan out.
Thank you.
Very good. Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. My comments are very similar to Deputy Mayor De La Isla's. As I'm looking over the, the list of candidates, I notice that we literally had from A to Z, starting with Anthony, all the way to Zach. And to have that diversity come out of District Four and, and stand up to represent, I just think that is phenomenal. And I don't know if there's other districts in the community that would have that many folks with that diverse of backgrounds, step up at, you know, weeks' notice and say, you know what? I am, I'm ready to take on the challenge. Let's go. That is, that is truly remarkable from District Four, and I think they should be commended for that. In the same breath, I would also like to welcome you. Hold on, it's an awful fun ride. Thank you.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Schools letting out this week, so this next week, there'll be a lot more kids on the, on the streets during the day, so watch out and slow down. Races are this weekend. Everybody get out and support what's going on in Topeka. And I heard on the news, I think it was last night, that Topeka Train Rovers, the Topeka Train Rovers are a professional baseball team, and the Picos League of Professional Baseball Clubs enjoy one of their first games at Batus Family Sports Complex against the Roswell Invaders. So get out and see some ballgames. And my gem for this week is the candidates that we had tonight. I was there at one time and did not, did not get voted in by the council, and then came back on, in the election. So I encourage you to reach out to all, those that did apply for this position, and ask them to be a part of your district involved with your service. But welcome to the council.
Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. This Saturday, the Topeka Art Guild Tag Sale will be at Fairlon Plaza Mall on, on the inside. So come on over to the west side, come on in the mall and check that out. Also mention that Topeka Gives is June seventh also at Fairlon Plaza, and such a great, Topeka Community Foundation, a great organization helping raise money. Hope you can come out. That would be this Saturday and June seventh.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of different comments. I want to echo my colleagues' comments about folks from District Four and the welcome to you, Tony. I want to add to that how impressed I am with the council's preparation for this. I'm, I'm almost dismayed at how many times between the inter, changing of city managers and interims, as well as changing of council members, who for one reason or another have needed to change midterm. But I think that the questions that randomly, without talking to each other, that the council members come up with, the thoughtfulness, and how diverse they are in terms of drawing out what's important, displaying what's important to us and drawing out what is important and what the thoughts are from the candidates, is just really great. And so, kudos to all of you as colleagues for this process. Other than that, kudos to the Police Department for their support of Kansas City, Kansas, and in making the arrangements even with all that was going on here, to support their brothers and sisters in Kansas City. That was quite a tragedy, and we've appreciated that mutual support when we've had our own. And so, kind of a bittersweet but very special time. I too want to mention Heartland Park. I am very excited to hear what's happening, the good comments from the racers, the ones that have raced at the races that they've had before, as well as the new motocross and so on. So I do encourage everybody on the council, as well as the community, to get down there and take a peek at what's happening and, and provide some support. I'm very excited about that development. I got handed a set of handouts for all of you in case you need it, but I want to encourage everybody to ride with the chief. It is Bike to Work Week this week, so hopefully you've already biked to work. But if you need a, if you need a, if you need another opportunity to ride, my understanding is that Chief Brown will lead that ride next Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, at one. So councilmembers and personnel of the city, and anybody in town, is welcome to ride with the chief and explore a little bit of the city. And with that, there is, I, I am personally involved with and aware of an announcement that's very special about the city of Topeka that will be released tomorrow. So stay tuned for news, good news about the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Claire.
If we do the ride, can we stop after the point three? Do you have to go the whole six-point three?
Probably just let them know you're dropping off.
Just asking. Concerts in the park are starting in North Topeka. If you haven't ever gone, it's just so relaxing to sit there and listen to the music. The first one is June sixth, and that's also their appreciation dinner night, so that'd be a good one to go to. And school's out in two days.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Hers school is out in two days. She didn't clarify that. I would like to say congratulations to Mr. Emerson. And to Ms. Emerson, thank you, because you share a big part of this. It interrupts your family when you're trying to eat and you're trying to shop. It, it's, you're going to have some, so we thank you for also serving as well. I'd just like to make a few comments. We had the car show downtown this weekend, and it was phenomenal. It is getting so big, we're going to have to move it off of Quincy, because there's just, there just wasn't enough walking space, really, truly. But it was just really, really awesome. And I could not believe all the people that were there, with it being graduation weekend. It was just awesome. Just a lot of, a lot of guys talking. And you know, I also want to say, you know, Mr. Jensen, he has a way of looking at things, and I have a way of looking at things too, Mr. Jensen, in my little eyes. And what's, what got me was when the person said, "Leadership is like having a baby."
Yes!
Because, uh, Mr. Jensen, it's my turn now.
I know.
And you know what? Not everybody can have a baby. So that was all right when she said that. So, you know, that, that excludes you, Mr. Jensen.
Yes. Please don't tell my wife to be, I'm not babies. I beg you.
So I, I, I thought that was, I liked that, that comment. Also, last but not least, Mr. Emerson, if there's anything that I can do to help you, don't hesitate to call. I'd be happy to. But I do want to make sure you have a smoke detector in your home. And if, you, well, how, how long has it been since you've had that updated? And I will get with you...
Seven years.
Seven years, or seven years behind. Do you, Moody, can we get him an application, please?
They're, they're hardwired, they're AC, is that...
You know, we, thank you, Mr. Mr., we're going to have the Fire Department call you. I want to keep all my colleagues safe.
I appreciate it.
It's very important... It's very important to me, and it's also important to the Fire Department. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Emerson, your opportunity.
Thank you. Well, I guess I want to say thank you to all you guys. It's a very intimidating thing. And I also, I was, shocked is not the right word, but I was very pleasantly surprised that so many people from my district, like I said in my answer, with the lake and with the KTA, there are a lot of times our district can be kind of fractured. So, it was very, it's very gratifying to see that many people. And we had a great time, actually, in back. And it was just, why does it take stuff like this for neighborhoods to get together and people to come forward? I wish, there needs to be more opportunities for that. So, I thank you, and I really meant everything in my answers. I will do the best to represent my district and to represent the city as well. One last thing is, those guys are here from Public Works. I work with those guys all the time. Dan Zeller, and there's Tim McCormick, Bob Sample. I don't think the public knows the lengths they go to to make sure things. And as a contractor, a lot of times, we're pushing them, "Oh, come on, let's shut the water off." No, you're gonna have to wait till a certain time. There are so many times, those guys do so many things that is never seen. And so, I, all those guys are, the city's lucky to have all those guys. So, I want to thank them.
Thank you. Well, thank you also for those comments about the Public Works, because I think our comments and our presentation tonight hope to convey the appreciation that we have for them. A couple, one announcement, we do have a JDO meeting tomorrow night. We have another incentive that will be considered, so I hope that everyone can be there that can. And also, I want to welcome behalf of the city, look forward to your service and working with you. That completes the announcements. We then go to public comment. The first is Roger Stewart.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to have a few words with you about my wife, oh, my wife, I brought my wife, Grace Stewart. We've been here about forty-four years in one spot, at twenty-four oh one Southwest Western. We are constituents of Sylvia. And the problem that I've come up with is the problem of Quentin Heights Hill. We've raised two children here. They went to Quentin Heights, Jardine Middle School, and Topeka High. We have lived here forty-four years. The city of Topeka has done many things for the area over the years. The city's street light down at the bottom of the hill on Twenty-Fourth and Topeka was really a plus. The bridge at Fillmore and Twenty-First was also a big plus for people getting off the hill. New curbs for our house and the area. This holds the dirt on the hill for our yards, and that was a big issue for us. Thank you, Topeka. We need to ask you of your help again. There's a big brush pile on, or jungle on the west side of five oh one property, which needs immediate attention. And the reason it needs immediate attention is that it's a health hazard. I worked with microscope forty-one years, and I know a little bit about disease and how it affects all our socioeconomic groups. And I'm asking you to help five oh one clean that up. In the past month, I have trapped, with the help of the Animal Control Police, twelve feral cats, two skunks, three raccoons, two possums. Animal Control says that they cannot set traps and brush, because the number of animals that would have to be just turned loose again. Ask your doctor or your vet how dangerous these animals are, and for children and adults. They may carry dangerous diseases, such as rabies. I have talked with federal health people, and they say it must be addressed on a local level. I then talked to this five oh one superintendent, and she referred me to her head groundskeeper. Well, I think it's a little more important than that, and should be addressed by people who are concerned about our city as well. This is a far bigger issue. When I approached the city ten years ago, a survey team was sent to establish ownership. No action was done. In an effort to keep the city from litigation, landscaping needs to be done. We've seen many ambulances over the years, and for the sledders, it would be beneficial for the city and five oh one, make it a safer place and more beautiful. Just a few more words, our tourists would have a better place to see our four to five hundred million-dollar expenditure for our Capitol Building as well. Now, what would really be slick is if they tear down the docking building, we could have some of that marble to landscape that and make it a beautiful place for the tourists to see. My hope, best hope for Topeka and five oh one, that they can resolve this problem. Now, it's gonna be a multifaceted agency situation. It's not gonna just be five oh one. It's just not gonna be.
Your time is up.
So, I want to leave that with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next is Joseph Ledbetter.
Evening, governing body. Welcome, Mr. Emerson. And I appreciated the different people that came up from District Four. And I've worked with some of those people in High Crest, and so we look forward to working with you on our needs over there. And speaking of the turnpike and that great divide, an entryway in the area of Twenty-Ninth and California would greatly serve not just that area, but help link this great city from east to west. Sorry. Anyway, I want to say that that was a great car show, and they're all good. I wish they'd have more. I don't know why they can't have one in the fall. But anyway, I just put my plug in for one. The next time the council meets, I was looking at the rules or the agenda for tonight, and it got crowded. But I think you're gonna talk about some council rule changes. One of the things that I would like, well, one of the things that concerns me about any council rule changes is anything that weakens the council. Because in November of two thousand and four, we voted, after five years of work, by a number of people to change this form of government to the manager council form of government, and away from the strong mayor form of government. So, anything that takes away, and this is nothing against the chair, but anything that takes away from council activities and duties and gives them to the mayor, I would be, I'd be opposed to. So, I'm just saying that it's the council's, it's the council's job, along with the manager and, of course, the mayor, to run the city. But the role of council should not be diminished. In fact, I wish everybody up here had a vote on the JDO budget and JDO meetings tomorrow. And I wish the public had a way to get our concerns on the agenda besides public comments. So far, we have not addressed that issue, but I'm sure we're going to at some point. One of the things that I was asked to talk about by Betty Phillips, I had a conversation with her a couple of weeks ago, and I think she sent everybody some statistics about vicious dog attacks and her concerns for High Crest. And I've seen this in other parts of the city, especially recently. We seem to have a lot of large dogs that tend to be vicious. I would question whether they're being licensed by their owners. They're big enough to jump fences. I've seen them running loose in High Crest. In fact, I had to collect her mail one day. I went over to sign something, a certificate that she asked me to come over and sign. The reason I had to go down to the street and collect her mail was because there was a very large pit bull that was challenging me, which really annoyed me. And he had a broken chain, which was the size of a log chain. So, that means he had broken that chain, and he was just running at large. Now, the police department, you know, I contacted the chief, and they took care of it, I believe. I haven't seen it since. But my problem with this is, those dogs can confront kids. They can confront frail people. And even though, I mean, he wouldn't leave. I mean, I had a nice stick I picked up, and he didn't attack, but he didn't want to leave either. And so, what would he have done to a little child? And what really concerns me is, some of these people collect these dogs, and so that means if they get out, now they're gonna take on pack behavior, which includes attacking things or people. And so, I think we've got a bit of a problem that we should have a discussion about. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That completes the public discussion. We have three executive sessions before us, so Deputy City Attorney, if you would state the parameters for the first one, please.
All right. The first one would be a motion to recess into executive session for a period not to exceed fifteen minutes to discuss non-elected personnel with reference to workers' compensation claims. To assist the governing body, the following staff is requested: the city manager, the deputy city manager, deputy city attorney, HR Director Russell, and risk manager Langston.
All right. Is there a motion to those parameters? Deputy Mayor De La Isla moves. Councilman Cohen seconds. All in favor vote yes. Opposed vote no. I vote yes.
I have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes. We'll go into executive session when the room is clear. Okay, yeah, then we go out there. Let's do, do that.
Okay.